...of the November 14th Regular Board of Education meeting. So glad you all could come. It's fun to have people here with us. I'd like to, just a recognition, we can do that before public audience, correct? So our first recognition is that we have a new member to our table, which we're all happy to welcome, Jennifer Bachelor, and she is, Tom Dorn resigned, and Jennifer has taken his seat, and we're so happy to have you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Looking forward to working with you.
She's got kids in the system, and kids coming to the system.
Nonstop children.
She's got a broad spectrum of high school, junior high, and elementary.
Yes, and a two-year-old.
And a two-year-old.
Welcome.
Very happy to have you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
No, I'm okay.
Public audience? I should mention, she was sworn in last night by the Board of Selectmen, so that's why this is her first meeting.
She can't back out now, right?
She can't back out now. No, she's in, it's official. I saw her put up her hand and everything.
Now you can tell her the schedule?
That's right.
No, no.
Exactly. No public audience? I'd like to welcome our Boy Scouts. Thank you very much, Troop 175. I think we have Kayden Grig, thanks for coming, Frank Hemmerich, very nice, Christian Paluso, and Hayden Carter. Wonderful. If you guys have any questions during the meeting, please be sure to raise your hand, and I'd be happy to call on you. We'd be happy to hear your input, or answer any questions you might have.
What brings our Boy Scouts to the meeting? Is this an experience?
It's a badge, correct?
Yes.
Does anyone want to tell us?
Citizen and Community Badge.
Wonderful.
Eagle Required.
Eagle Required.
Eagle Required.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
You wouldn't be here on your own volition.
Wonderful, that's a great plan. Excellent plan, thank you very much, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. So, moving on, Dylan, can you start us with reports?
Sure. Well, it's been a couple weeks since we've all seen each other, so I have a lot of information, but I'll try to get through pretty quickly. Toon Hills hosted the Election Day Bake Sale, and they raised over $2,300 for the upcoming fifth-grade Camp Jewel trip. Latimer Lane and the Middle School are collecting canned goods for the annual Turkey Trot. And I believe Latimer, the date is November 15th, I'm not sure on the Middle School, for the deadline. The Freestyle Repertory Theater put on an amazing improv show at Central School, and it was highly acclaimed by students, I've heard. Squadron Line hosted their first annual book walk, where students carved their favorite characters into pumpkins, and that were donated by the community. On Veterans Day, the elementary schools and the middle school invited service members to come speak about their experience in the military. Students at the Middle School celebrated Anti-Bowling Month for the month of October by handing out cards recognizing students who displayed character traits of the HJ Way, which is responsibility, kindness, and important traits like that. And once a student got that, they could pass it on to another one of their friends if they saw their friend doing something good for the school. Many of the Middle School students also participated in the Lions Club Peace Poster Contest, and the staff voted on the top three favorite posters, and the winner will receive a monetary prize. Terrifil is hosting a Parent Math Night tomorrow to teach parents about the new math program, and how to teach new things at home. Both the high school, as well as the middle school, participated in the 22-Hour Freedom Pen-a-thon, which students stayed over, and they made pens in the architecture wing, and they gave them out to service members to honor their service. The high school held the annual Blood Drive today, where students over the age of 17 could go down to the gym during school and donate blood. The high school also celebrated the life of the legendary English teacher, Mrs. Miller, last weekend by hosting a celebration for friends, peers, and students. And the high school also held the Men's Night Out performance to promote interest in the men's choir program around the district, and the singers were in grades five to 12, and I heard it was a great show. Thank you.
Dylan, as always, exceptionally done, very exceptional.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Lydia?
Yes, I just would like to comment on a couple things. Recently, CAPE held a budget webinar, actually was last week after the budget was passed, so with an 881-page document, there are some positive things coming out of this document for public education. So there will be some certainty at our levels. For my fellow members, you can go on the CAPE website and listen to the webinars, about an hour, but it was very, very interesting, and talked about things that we're going to be, some challenges that we're going to be facing this year. With that being said, this weekend is the CAPE CAPS Annual Conference, and I will be there on Thursday for the Delegate Assembly. The Delegate Assembly is where we at CAPE send in resolutions for, that will start to target our legislative agenda for January. It's actually that time of year again, January is around the corner, where we're going to be up on the Hill at the Capitol, you know, talking to legislators about some of the issues and concerns that we have in public education. So some of the resolutions that will be coming forward will be in government's labor relation, in some health and safety, so there are a number of things that we will be discussing at the Delegate Assembly. It's about a four-hour Delegate Assembly, and hopefully we'll be able to come to some agreement with some resolutions that we want to pass forward. Friday will be an entirely long day, we have some great speakers all day, and so it'll be a long day, but a very interesting day, and as you know, this is a great time for, or actually a great learning experience for Boards of Ed members and superintendents, because this is CAPE CAPS Conference, to come together, and also with leaders in education. Commissioner will be there. I'm not sure if the governor's there, he's scheduled to come at lunchtime, so we never know until last minute, but other than that. And then Saturday is the half-day, where we have a student symposium and panels, so that is what's going on at this end in November.
Jennifer? Okay. Mike?
The only thing I'd mention is that there was a meeting of the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force last night. Superintendent Curtis will provide the update on that. Good meeting, thanks to our district leadership. We were provided with a number of updates on enrollments and so on, so.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Lomkey?
In its inaugural season, the Simsbury High School Unified Flag Football Team participated in the championships, which included schools from both Connecticut and Massachusetts. We're actually only one of two high schools that have a unified flag football team, so we paired up with a lot of the Massachusetts schools. And out of 20 schools, Simsbury High took second and received silver medals, so they were pretty pumped about that, and happy to report that to the Board.
Wonderful. Mr. Sullivan?
I was just going to introduce one other guest besides our scouts tonight, who is here. I ran into David Elekna, who is an awesome Simsbury High graduate from a few years ago, and in his senior year, so while he's not getting a badge, he is getting credit for his coursework in education at Central Connecticut. And as I caught up with him before the meeting, will be doing student teaching in another local district next semester, and then be in the teacher pool soon, so he was smart enough to reconnect with the Director of Personnel.
Good move, Dave.
We welcome Dave. Back to Simsbury.
Thank you for coming.
So I have a couple of things. As Dylan spoke about the pen, I have an example of one of the pens. I'm actually going to give it to my aunt over the holidays for her son's service, who was killed in the Iraq War, and I was able, so I'll pass it around so you can get a look at it, but it comes, every pen was put in this package, and every student who made the pen signed their name for it, so I was able to choose one, and will take it with me on the holidays to give to my aunt. So take a quick look at those. They made over 300 of them, and it was unbelievable.
That was a long day, they were going well into the next day, too.
They started at four and ended at 2:00 the following day. So, Election Day was a full PD day, we had a great day, a couple of different things going on, choice workshops at all three levels, at the elementary, middle, and high school. At the elementary level, we had 33 teacher presenters, and 20 different workshops, which was amazing, and a list of the workshops are just outstanding, that our teachers stepped up and decided to present to their colleagues. At the middle school, we had 17 teacher presenters and 13 topics, and at the high school, 23 teachers presented with 16 topics for teachers to choose from. In addition, our principals held building-level PD at some point during the school day, so it was a very well, the teachers loved it. We actually had an opportunity at the meeting, PDEC meeting, Professional Development and Evaluation Committee, and the teachers gave pretty good reviews of all the work that was done on that day. And in addition, I know that there will be a PTO Math Night at Terrifil tomorrow night, but on December 6th, a Wednesday night, there'll be a district-wide Math and Focus Parent Night on December 6th. Got Latimer Lane.
Great.
Off to that for this evening.
Wonderful. Mr. Curtis?
All right, two items. One, I wanted to draw your attention to some information in the folder. We put it on hold initially because of our, the budget situation, the budget freeze, but we have produced our snapshot of the annual report, which is, I know we're looking forward to our elementary principals tonight, and they talk about their continuous improvement planning. This is an annual document that we come out with that represents the entire district performance with some benchmark data, really more of a dashboard look to provide some insights to how we measure up to our Board goals, so we have that there for you, we post that on our website, we have it available to people at the school. So it's been an informative document for us that really demonstrates the important things in the district, as well as our performance. The second piece Mike referenced, I wanted to provide a brief update on the meeting that took place last night, Facilities and Enrollment. We had great representation there. Mike is the co-chair of that committee that's been running for six years now, I believe. Tara was there, Susan Salina was there, we had our central office team there as well, and Neil did a great job presenting some detailed information to us. So really what we took a look at was current enrollment, it's information that this board received on October 1, and provided an update for that. We also gave a look ahead at what our projected enrollment looks like for next year and the next few years, and that's information we're going to be bringing to this Board at our next meeting, because it really ties into our budget process. And then we talked a little bit about the Henry James Project. We had mentioned early on in this year, and communicated to both our staff and our parents that we were going to initiate a conversation and take a look at the Henry James Project as a 6, 7, 8 school, and initiate a conversation of what that could mean as far as a configuration of our elementary schools. And what I wanted to frame tonight, and then I have a recommendation for the Board, is that last year, we spent a lot of time and really good effort and conversation on framing a $23 million project for Henry James, a much-needed project, that I felt like we gained, certainly at this Board level consensus on, as well as support and good dialogue with the Board of Finance. The situation hit with the state of Connecticut, and not knowing where our local funding was going, in negotiating and working through passing our own budget, both the town's capital and our capital was removed from the plan. So as a result of that, we kind of, in thinking about where we were with capacity at Henry James, thought it was timely to take a look at this new concept. What we need to do now is, of course, get the Board of Education up to speed on what that might look like, all right? So we provide it in your packets, not for discussion tonight, but to take with you what a floor plan would look like, as well as the PowerPoint presentation that Neil put together. But we're bound by some real strict timelines here in the current year, so we have to have some, I would call a pretty significant and in-depth conversation about not only that project, but other capital projects that Burke is going to touch on just initially tonight. My recommendation would be that, much like in our current budget process, when we clump topics together, we have a workshop environment, and that we really dig into information around both that Henry James Project, the current $23 million project, and make some decisions on kind of a pathway on what we want to focus on initially, and what we're willing to focus on in the next two or three years in terms of strategy. And I think it would be better served as a single agenda item in a workshop environment, Q&amp;A, where we could provide the information in the background that you guys are looking for and would require. So that would be my recommendation on that. I know Burke's going to touch on capital a little bit later, and there's some things as a result of Henry James being pushed out, that now are stacked on top of that, that we have to have some dialogue about. So, I thought it was a real productive meeting last night, good points came up, certainly a lot to think about, and that would be my thought, and I'll have Katie reach out over the course of the back end of this week, and we'll schedule a date for people on that workshop.
Just a question on that.
Yep.
Matt, when we were considering the Henry James Project before the 6, 7, 8 idea came up, it was a very, very good and very well-thought-out
Yes.
prospect. Now, with the 6, 7, 8 idea is joining together with it, are we first going to have some sort of discussion about the 6, 7, 8 idea, and then integrate that with, or can they not be separate?
No, we can do that, and Tom, and then I think it's a strategic conversation, because we certainly are in a position as a Board to move that, if we felt good about it, move that $23 million project forward, because it's been vetted and continue to talk about it. Maybe it's stages, maybe it's phases, and how to look at this, so those are all things we could talk about. Because I don't believe, and I've talked to Tara about this, and Mike as well, and my team, that we have enough time in the current arc of this current year to fully vet a 6, 7, 8 concept, and talk about what that would mean for the back end of the reconfiguration in that timeframe. So if that's a priority, we would have to discuss that timeline, and how these two concepts come together. So it's a lot to talk about, but absolutely will share with you that concept, other schools that do it, and a host of information.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, and I think that's the thing, that the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force has been in existence for six years.
Right.
It comes, you've got, you've got members of the public, you've got members of the town staff who are in buildings, and they work on our buildings and our facilities, you've got people from our office, from our department, you've got Board of Selectmen, you've got Board of Finance people, so you've got a broad range of people who are, and the theory is that you talk things through. We don't make changes without talking things through and making good decisions and thoughtful decisions, so I think that's what I really enjoy about working on this task force, because, and Mike does such a great job organizing all of us, but it, you really get a lot of good feedback from a lot of different voices. And so nothing needs to be done quickly or without great discussion. But the discussion has begun, so that's what this task force has always been doing.
Got it, thank you.
Mike, do you have anything to add?
No, nothing to add, that's a good summary.
Thank you all very much. We also have in our packets, that I think is important to know, is our District Annual Report, and this goes with our projection today, but that's something that everyone should be looking at, because it's, this is public documents, and we do such a great job publishing this stuff. If anyone has any questions about our district, this is really what they need to get.
Just get mailed to, what is the distribution of this?
It's on the website, we have it at, we have it at the library, we have it at the Senior Center, we have it at all the schools.
And you can always get it here.
But we don't do a mass distribution of it.
It's too expensive to do a mass distribution, so anybody who needs it can get it.
Yeah, I can imagine that, but it's so impressive, and it's such a good picture of what this school system is all about. I'm just wondering if there's ways to very efficiently distribute it. I mean, I'd love to have people in my neighborhood to see this.
Well, if someone needs it, you can make sure they get it.
I'll get some coffee, great, thank you.
Moving on to the approval of minutes of the October 24th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Abstain.
Abstain. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. You would have been abstained.
Oh, okay.
Excellent. So we're all set on that. Moving on to Mr. Sullivan.
So our personnel report tonight just has one item, and it does not require a Board vote, so it's informational. At the last meeting, I told you that our beloved English Department Supervisor, Nilda Irazare, had become an Assistant Principal in another district. What we have done with this, as you know, Department Supervisors have some portion of their day that's teaching, and some that's the leadership portion. This is replacing the teaching portion of her day. Dana Pescatello has worked at Simsbury in a number of capacities, as a long-term substitute, as a part-time teacher, and as a tutor in our writing centers at both Henry James and Simsbury High School. She is the perfect choice to come back into the classroom in a point-four capacity, and we welcome her. She's been working in Simsbury at the high school in the Writing Center, and will continue in that, so now her day will be teaching these couple of classes, and then rounding it out in the Writing Center. So we welcome Dana back to the classroom.
That's great, and having someone who has such experience and already has relationships with students is fabulous. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now we're on to Marie Miller Scholarship.
Yes, we have Marie D. Miller Scholarship. It gets vetted by Mr. O'Brien and J. Alan Peregrin, and it brings to you a longtime, 43-year teacher who loved Simsbury High School. She taught 10th-grade honors, American Lit, public speaking, and film history, very, very well-known. She also was the faculty advisor for the National Honor Society for 36 years, so that was a, she just had quite a presence at Simsbury.
And mock trial, I think she was faculty advisor to mock trial as well.
Oh, okay, she probably was. So there was a number of awards that were given to her for her enthusiasm, generosity, innovation, and her academic rigor. People remember her for that. In 2007, to celebrate her contributions to Simsbury High School, including being the Educator of the Year by the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, and her 80th birthday at that point, Mr. Sullivan, as the principal at Simsbury High School, declared February 16th, 2007, as Marie Miller Day, and I do remember that day. She
Sullivan's got a lot of power to declare days, huh?
So there is one scholarship in the amount of $1,000 to a graduating senior that will start with this school year, the graduating class of 2018, and continue for each of the next five years, commencing with the class of 2023. And this scholarship is to follow Mrs. Miller's passions. Appropriate recipients could be members of the Simsbury Scholars with excellence in English or literature, and very much, you know, the creative writing aspect of the work that she did, a love of film, and especially the students who are first in their family to attend college. So I'd ask the Board to accept the scholarship.
That's wonderful.
Move to it, yeah.
Move to the sixth. Can I have a second? Any discussion?
Tara, I would just add that this scholarship is actually going to end up being slightly more generous than on your paper, as part of the group that helped plan Saturday's celebration that Dylan mentioned. A number of significant checks came in on Saturday to honor Marie, so there's actually more money in the scholarship pool now that will be distributed.
There was a wonderful celebration, Dylan mentioned it quickly, but it was, there were a couple hundred people there, and it was a great celebration of her life, and she had people from friends and family, students, and Mr. Sullivan spoke, and it was just a really great day to celebrate a very special teacher, and it's, anytime we can celebrate her, it's just worth doing, because she was fabulous. So all, we've got a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, thank you very much, and thank you to her family. Moving on to, oh, that's me. So the schedule, we're on the calendar?
Um, yes.
BOE calendar? Do we just have to, do we have to make a motion?
Yes, we are.
Because it's already been presented.
No.
So we are presenting the, this calendar for next year, the meeting, our meeting schedule for next year, if anyone looks at this, and there's not much we can do about it, because it's really the second and the fourth Tuesday of the month, so that's kind of what we're doing. All those, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
That we accept it?
That we accept it with one clarification. On the bottom, on the move that the Board of Education set their 2017 meeting schedule, so it should be 2018.
Thank you very much, Lydia?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Now we're moving on to, being that we're meeting tonight, and then on the 21st of November, we have our Tribe Board for our Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, and Board of Ed meeting on the 21st. I'd like to have a motion that we cancel the November 28th meeting of this month, and move on to our December meetings.
I'll make a motion that we cancel the Board of Education meeting schedule for November 28th, 2017.
Thank you.
Second the motion.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. So, but we do have to remember that we do have the 21st as a meeting, and that meeting is being held at the Simsbury Public Library.
Is there public audience for that meeting, or no? I don't believe there normally is public audience at that meeting, no.
No, there is not.
And that meeting starts at?
5:30.
5:30. I thought it was 5:45, but I'm
5:45.
At the library.
At the public library.
It is open to the public.
It's open to the public, but there'll be no public audience to speak. Great. Okay, so I think we're moving on to our reports.
All right, so you might wonder why we have all the elementary principals, Betsy Gonzalez, Nancy Forsberg, here tonight, because we have the last of the presentations, this is the elementary report for tonight. So Mike Lizetti and Meg Evans, I'd invite you up to the table as we get started. I'm going to be the clicker. As you go to the next slide, you can see that we have an agenda very similar to the high school report and the middle school report, where we will share with you the academic indicators of success, talk about school culture and climate, we will give you the areas of focus that are being worked on this current school year, as well as a budget preview. So I'll pass it off on to Mike, I believe you're first, Mr. Lizetti.
And we will do our best to keep it lively for our friends in the corner over there. So, good evening, everyone, thank you for, thank you for having us tonight. Each year we start our school year by looking at numbers. We look at data, we look at student data from across the year, and we use all of that data to determine a couple of things. We look at who are our students who need the most, who need increased supports and interventions, we look at what is our student growth over time, and we use all of that data also to determine, is our curriculum doing what it's intended to? Is it getting our kids to the benchmarks that we need it to? So, without further ado, what guides our work is the goals that you guys lay out for us every five years, particularly students reading on grade level by the end of third grade, and then the second piece being students who are performing in reading, writing, and math on grade level at the end of sixth year, at the end of sixth grade, rather. Why those levels? It takes, it takes time to hit certain achievement levels, so we spend those first few years really working on teaching our kids to learn to read, being able to look at a piece of text, being able to figure out what it's trying to tell them, being able to decode the words that are in there, and then in third grade, it switches to not just learning to read, but reading to learn, because everything that they are going to access from that point on, really is going to come through writing math, or through reading, rather, math. We need the reading skills, science, we need the reading skills, social studies, we need the reading skills. So it's an exciting transition as they move from into third grade, and they start, you know, stepping up the text that they're looking at. The integration of reading, writing, and math in sixth grade, that's that big gateway to everything that they're going to do as they transition into middle school, and high school, and college, and beyond. And so we look at student performance in each of those content areas through their elementary experience, culminating sort of with the capstone of the end of sixth grade, and we want those kids prepared to take on the world as they transition to Henry James, and then to the high school as well. So what you have here is a presentation of how those students in grades three and six perform on reading. Now, it goes without saying, but I will say it, we look at their reading levels at the end of kindergarten, first grade, second grade, all the way up through sixth grade, but the numbers you see before you today are third and sixth, and they are indicative of the fact that we're doing a really good job. The cohort growth from year to year is steady and strong. As you look up there, and you see that 87% of students reading at grade level, as measured by the DRA 2, is a historically strong number, that's typically where we land, in that 85 to 90%. You can't help but be drawn to the 76 below it for the DRP. That's typically where our students land on the DRP. The DRA and the DRP measure two different things. The DRA really focuses on students' accuracy, students' comprehension, students' fluency, again, learning how to read. The DRP starts looking at their comprehension and critical thinking skills. It's also the first time they've ever taken a test like that, where they're reading short passages and filling in multiple-choice questions. To give you some perspective of cohort growth, though, that 89% for the sixth grade on DRP, when they were in third grade, was roughly 80%. So as you look at that number, know that that's where we step in, that's where we start, and our students have historically climbed year after year after year. We also look at elementary writing data. This is a piece that, as you may recall, years ago came off of, it was on the S-Back for a year, and then it's off the S-Back, which really puts the burden back on the districts to assess our students' writing. And I say the Board burden, and you think negative, it's a wonderful thing, because we get to see our students go through the writing process. You know, where, when it was on S-Back, we were measuring one piece of writing that they might happen to pull out of a hat. These numbers are representative of our students' ability to write narrative pieces, opinion pieces, argumentative pieces, and we look at students' writing throughout the course of the year. There's multiple ways that our kids can show mastery, which is a wonderful thing. There's a cumulative writing score, so they take those three pieces that they do throughout the course of the year. We, we use a rubric to, to assign a numerical value to it. And if they hit 50 points throughout those three pieces, congratulations, you're there, you're doing a great job. Let's say you have a kid who struggles in a particular area of writing. The other way that they can do it is by hitting a certain percent, I believe it's 16? Help me out. 17, on two of those three pieces of writing. So it allows you to have a hiccup, if you will, not your best day, not your best piece forward, but still demonstrate mastery through another way. Student writing is assessed on focus, organization, elaboration, fluency, conventions, and student voice, sort of. Do you hear that kid coming through as you read that piece? Some fantastic growth to celebrate. Last year, when we sat up here, those sixth grade numbers were 81%, and as we sit before you today, they're at 91%, which is really exciting for sixth grade, because sixth graders don't have a separate pull-out writing block. Their writing is delivered through the content of social studies and science, which frankly is what we do, our writing in the rest of our lives. You know, we don't, we don't sit kids down in writing classes on the job, but you do your writing in the work that you are doing. So, in addition to our internal markers, which historically remain strong, we live in a world of external accountability, and those two big external accountability pieces for us currently are the Smarter Balance Assessment, which my counterpart will tell you about shortly, and CMT Science. We're going to put some CMT Science scores in front of you. This is the last year you will see this slide, and I will explain that in a moment. So in addition to this being the final year that we have taken the CMT Science test, it is also the first year that the state decided to put it online, which inherently, as we know, when we change this system, does typically come with a slight dip in student performance, which we did see this year. However, it was better than the near 10-plus percent drop that the majority of the state saw. So again, you know, we are, we are performing in that 80th-plus percentile, and that's definitely something that we should be proud of. But a lot's about to change in science, as this is the final year, the final iteration of the CMT, and we step into the new generation's science standards, which you have heard some about, I believe you will hear some about at the end of the program as well. So our sixth grade currently is piloting a bunch of different units, our sixth grade and third grade and fourth grade, and we have teams that are working with PREG to write these units, or bundles, as they are being called. And we are piloting them and slowly putting them into practice, rather than dumping them on top of, on top of math. We're trying to do what we think is responsible, which is to roll out one thing at a time, do it really well, and then do the next thing really well. So the spring of this year, we will have a field test, and again, you may remember the S-Bac field test, which is all the stress of a test without any results at the end of the day. And then in 2019, we will have, that's on there. We will have the, what's being called, for lack of a better term, the high-stakes test, the test that counts. The nice thing with having the pilot is we get a chance to see what the test is going to look like. We get to expose our kids to the platform, give them a chance to kind of practice and rehearse how it's going to feel when they're taking it. And then we can use some of that work to target our fourth graders and below, and the middle school the same. So it's, it's an exciting thing. It's an exciting thing to see the increased stress on, on science and the approach to science, which really mirrors our approach to math, which is, what do kids know? What's that? How can they apply that information? And how can they grow? Rather than just giving you, here's a, here's a lab sheet, do it, write about what you did. You know, we really want to increase hands-on for kids and their experiential learning. So I hand you to Meg.
All right. So I have the pleasure of being able to talk about how our students did on the external accountability measures of the S-Bac. Historically, Simsbury has done quite well in the area of literacy, and yet again, we were able to have that same level of success in third grade. I think one of the things that we continue to see help support this work is we had adopted the new Teachers College Units of Study last year in the areas of reading, and we're really finding that students are, and teachers are responding well to that. Although the format has been the same, the units of study are a little bit more explicit. There are some learning progressions that really break down the skills and outline them in kid-friendly rubrics, and it provides a continuum of what students should accomplish over the years. So if somebody is excelling in third grade, you can look to the fourth grade learning progression to see how I can expand a student's skill set. At the same token, if I have a third grader who hasn't quite, is still having some difficulties, I can take a look at the specific areas, how, how did they teach that in second grade? So that then they can, you know, use that same language and build upon the success. And so I think having the new units of study, the online resources, and certainly the coaching that has been provided by our language arts consultants continue to help us support these strong scores.
Just a quick question about that chart, please. The grade six trend, the longitudinal trend, 15, 16, 17, is straight up. It's, it's a very, very consistent upward positive improvement trend, and it's just great to see. The other numbers are very good in the absolute, but they just seem to be hovering around. Is there any, do we have any ideas? What's going on in grade six to cause such an enormous improvement over time?
I think there's a couple of things, and I think we'll get into that a little bit later in the presentation, but I also feel like in grade six, I think we have the right measures in place to monitor progress. I think in the other grade levels, we don't necessarily have the right, didn't have in the past, consistent measures that we could dip in and do some dipsticks of student progress over time. And as we're able to get more measures that we can use on a regular basis, instead of just three times a year, I think we're going to see a more consistent performance in the other grade levels.
Thank you. Thank you.
So in math, you can also see, we are continuing to improve our performance over time. However, this isn't where we want to be. And that is one of the reasons why we took a hard look at our math curriculum and have made a change in how we're teaching all of our students. We ended up seeing, one of the things last year, when we did the pilot, our grade six math teachers continued to teach the Math and Focus units after the pilot was over. And you can see that they performed quite well on the S-Bac, so we are hopeful that we will see similar results with the other grade levels this year. We're also using an internal measure called the STAR assessments, and when we took the first round of that, we saw that there was an increased performance on the units, on the standards that had been taught in the curriculum. So we're hopeful, again, that between our own internal markers, as well as this external marker, that we're going to see a common trend once the S-Bacs are provided this year. But I think, what do all these numbers mean? You know, it's great, great to see these numbers, but we do like to compare and put the numbers in context, and I think we see a similar story. When we look at how Simsbury performs compared to our DIRG, in, in the language arts, we're in the top three, which is certainly our goal, to be in the top three, and we're pretty darn close to being second, with only 0.4 tenths away from being in, in that second spot. In math, we're smack in the middle of the DIRG. So that's just not where we like to, to be in our performance area. So I think, again, what we had talked about with our change in curriculum, as well as being able to take a look at more internal measures, we're hoping that we're going to see a rise in that. And it's interesting to note that of the five districts that have performed better than we did, three of them do use Math and Focus. So we're hopeful that we're going to see the same type of progress that they do. I think one of the things that we're looking at more strategically is not only our students getting a marker of a certain level of performance, but also to take a look at their growth, and as well as the gap, an achievement gap. We want to take a look at how are all of our students doing, but also taking a look at how are those at-risk or high-needs students doing in comparison to the collective whole. And we do have some work to do in that area. These are the comparisons for grade three in math and in ELA. So this is our DIRG comparison. So the smallest gap between our whole population and our high-needs is a 30, 40-point difference. The largest gap in math is 102, and Simsbury is right at 88. It is higher than the state average, so that is something that we're going to continue to take a close look at. I think that one of the things that we find is that when you are a high-performing district, it is hard to have, you often find a wider gap. Take a look at, and we're going to continue to struggle with. In reading, you know, certainly that gap is a little bit smaller, but certainly we want to make sure that that gap is closed. You're going to see a similar trend in sixth grade as well. That's, we're certainly below the state's gap, but we want to make sure that all of our students are succeeding and having the success that we're talking about. I think the challenge in math will be, as, as we continue to increase the performance of all of our students, we want to make sure that that is really of all of our students and not just students who don't fit into that high-needs group. So we're going to have to be really careful and monitor progress as we continue to see increased progress overall on S-Bac. And so how are we going to do that? We always pride ourselves on the ongoing monitoring of student progress. And at the end of each marking period, we have a wealth of data where we sit at the PLCs, our grade-level team meetings, and really try to decipher how are students performing, be able to discuss their progress, to set some goals, and then, you know, take a look at the next marking period. What we're really excited about is that as we get more tools like STAR, like the learning progressions from the new TC units of study, even S-Bac has come up with, they call them internal interim assessment bundles, that you can do some more frequent dipsticks of progress monitoring with kiddos. And I think that that's something that we're really excited about, because teachers take data on kids on a daily basis, and you're able to be able to track how they're doing. But like, just like we have our external measures, you really want to say, that's fine that you can do this in class, it's great that you're able to do this in a small group or in a one-to-one setting, but can you do this on an on-demand task? That's really where the proof of the pudding is, that's when you know that you've really generalized those skills. And we are now having more assessments that can really help give us those mini on-demand tasks to make sure that the students are progressing in those areas just as well as they are under students' instruction. So we're really excited to be able to have more formal mid-cycle data conversations, and again, looking at growth in those two ways. Are students able to achieve a particular benchmark, but also are you able to grow? Because one of the things that we want to be able to do is make sure that all students are growing at an acceptable rate. The students who are on benchmark, the students who are above benchmark, and certainly the students who are below benchmark, are they growing to catch up? We're really excited about the tools that we have, so that we can really continue that cycle of taking a look at the data, identifying student needs, setting goals, taking a look at what we're going to change, how we're going to change our instructional practices, and then see how they do, and then just continue to repeat that process on a more frequent basis. So, in addition to our academic numbers, we also take a look at our school culture and climate, and so we're going to spend a little time on that. I think one of the really neat things about Simsbury is that although we have five elementary schools, there's also a lot of commonality between all of us. We all have our character education programs, we all have our school-wide celebrations, we have student leadership opportunities, we have amazing PTO organizations that help support all of our work, and we have climate committees that involve teachers and parents and community members. So it's nice that we all have that common bond. But we also are able to be unique and showcase ourselves in ways that are a little bit special. So at Squadron Line, we continue to shine. We had 100% of our students receive suns over the last year, which is really exciting. We find that, you know, teachers should be able to find students who demonstrate respect, responsibility, or kindness at least once in, in their time at Squadron. Last year, it was really exciting, the founders of the Squadron Line TAC Club graduated and moved on to the middle school. During their time at Squadron Line, they raised over $21,500 that was able to go towards local and global charities. So that was quite impressive and quite a feat. And certainly, the success wouldn't be without all of the support of our community. At Terrafill, they were able to expand their second step program to all classrooms. It was piloted in one grade level, and it was able to be expanded to all grade levels, and that really had a positive impact on school readiness behaviors. They also were able to incorporate growth mindset into their CLIME character education program. So that was really exciting to see their whole community, with the students and the teachers and their families, learning about the power of having a positive growth mindset. And last year, Terrafill had the fewest Better Choice slips and the most F.O.A. awards since they started tracking that. So that was really exciting. At Latimer, they continue with the Latimer Lane Way, guided by their principles of respect, responsibility, and kindness, and nearly every one of their students was recognized with, for making a positive decision. They also had every class recognized for showing great character throughout the year. And what was really neat is that they were able to have their student leadership team really help teach the younger grade students all about the character and the way, the Latimer Lane, how it's a great place to grow. At Tooten Hills, they were able to enhance their character education program, and they were able to put up posters all throughout the schools of the common expectations. And they really worked together with the students, the staff, and families to really come up with those common guidelines, and it was nice to be able to display those behaviors throughout the hallways, and being able to demonstrate their character traits of respect, responsibility, caring, and integrity. They were also able to infuse the growth mindset stances into their character education work, so that was really exciting. And they had over 649 character conductor tickets distributed. And at Central School, they continue to sail. They were able to rebrand their logo and be able to have that, again, in collaboration, you see some common themes between students, teachers, and parents input, and they have their sixth-grade captains who continue to help these students learn their central way and take on leadership roles. In addition, because we love data, we wouldn't want to talk about, leave climate out without talking about data. So there were surveys that were given to students in third grade and fifth grade, as well as to family members of third and fifth grader, graders, as well as to all of our certified staff, taking a look at climate. And you can see areas of strength, there was, again, some commonality between all of us. Teachers really feel that growth is supported here in Simsbury. Students were able to recognize that the character education programs were a vital part of their schools, and their family members really felt that school was a safe place and a welcoming place for their children to be. But there are certainly areas that we will continue to focus on. One of the things, like was mentioned earlier this evening, is teachers really value choice in their professional development, so that being able to make sure that we're providing professional development that meets all of our teachers' needs, just as we're able to do for our students, we want to continue to take a look and maximize the amount of choice for our teachers. That our students want to have an increased sense of belonging at an individual level. So we want to take a look in what is, what exactly does that mean, and how can we make sure that our students feel a part of our schools? And our families were saying that they would like to have an increased learning opportunities that are really matched with students. And I think one of the ways that we'll be able to get that is if we continue to build upon this inquiry model that we've started with math, and will certainly continue to carry over into science, that we're going to feel that more of that match between students' interest and what we're teaching them.
What is that? You said inquiry model?
Yeah, so being able to, be able to kind of say, here's a topic, go in and explore it, what can you learn about it? What do you notice about it? And, and we can push their thinking that way, instead of, here's a topic and here's the three things that you need to learn about it, to really let students kind of get in, problem solve, and push their thinking about it.
Thank you.
So you have heard a bit about where we have been, and now just going to talk with you briefly about sort of where we're going in the future. So we are deep in the thicket of the implementation of Math and Focus, and if you were to walk into a math room right now, you would, it is exciting, kids are digging in, they are grappling, they are talking, they are, they are driving the instruction, and if, as you walk in as an evaluator, you're like, wow, it's really loud in here. Lots of kids are talking, and kids are moving around the room, and kids are picking up, and they're moving things, which is exactly what you want math to be. Math should be hands-on at the primary level, kids are learning and exploring, and they are realizing that they know so many different things that can help them solve this problem, and now I can teach it to my classmate, and then I can share it with my class. And then you, Tom, Tom can teach me, because Tom knows how to do it this way, because he learned how to do it this way. And kids are developing this really much deeper sense and understanding of how to solve problems. And obviously, you know, we will get to that point later in their math careers where it's, you know, they're using those standard algorithms, and it was fascinating to see it in a fifth grade room the other day, start from, you know, really hands-on stuff to traditional algorithms by the end of, you know, a 60-minute math lesson. It's kid-driven, and that's what we need all of our instruction to be. So that's been very exciting. Without the math coaching support, it's not working that way, though. The, the math coaches have done such a remarkable job.
Really?
Of supporting our teachers without overwhelming our teachers. They have been there to, let me help you with this, okay, you need a little space, okay, I'll step in here, I will co-teach it with you, we can walk through it together. I, I want another one.
I want my own.
I see that on the next slide.
Mr. Curtis is looking a slide. This is the budget preview for Mr. Curtis's panel tonight. This is the budget preview for Mr. Curtis's bell tonight. So we've seen the impact that
You are so lucky you have one.
But we've seen the impact that they have, and there has been a huge benefit to having them develop an expertise across a grade level, because they can come in and sit down with my fifth grade math teacher and go, okay, here's what I saw at this school with this fifth grade teacher, and here's what I saw at that school with this fifth grade teacher. But to have someone within the building, someone who can support multiple grade levels, and be available, more readily available, because if it's not Tuesday and it's not my day, I need to wait four days before they're going to be able to sit down with that group and provide them the support. I am eternally thankful for the board supporting the positions that they have, and it would be wonderful as we move forward if there's a chance to add one back in. Ongoing supports in language arts, we are remarkable and exceptional and amazing at language arts, but that does not mean that we're going to sit back and just be okay with being really, really good. We want to be exceptional at every grade level, every time, everything that we do. So as we, as we do enroll those new units of study for the Teachers College work, that does require the support of our language arts consultants and our writing coaches. And we notice as we look at that data cycle, that there are areas, conventions is an area that we typically have performed not poorly, but less strong in regards to writing. So we are, our writing team is, you know, putting new grammar units together, we are launching those, we are piloting those, we are putting those into practice. And our work with growth mindset, growth mindset, best conversation with a teacher shortly in the beginning of the year was, it's awesome that we're doing all of this growth mindset work the same year that we're doing Math in Focus, I'm feeling like that didn't happen by accident. It didn't. Math is hard, we are learning new things, and we need to look at the way that our kids approach their learning, the way that our kids approach their tasks, and make sure that they see every single thing in front of them educationally as something that they can tackle, that they have the skill set, that they have the supports, that they have the curriculum, and the people around them to be able to tackle and to move forward in their learning.
And our teachers, too.
And our teachers, too.
And so I think that's what's been really nice, too, is because as a reminder, not only do our students need to have these flexibility, and persistence, and resilience, and optimism, and empathy, but so do our teachers, and we need to have it for our colleagues, but also, I think, more importantly, I think our teachers can be hard on ourselves, because we like to perform at high levels at all the time, and so when we're not, even if we're performing something good, a lot of times in their minds, it can be seen as a failure, because good isn't good enough here in town, and we always like to excel, and so just being able to have some of that empathy and forgiveness with themselves as they're continuing to move through and become experts. We like to use the term yet, so they're not masters at this yet, so as they're learning through it, to make sure that they have some compassion for themselves. So what are we going to be looking at in this upcoming budget? Certainly, we want to make sure that we are fiscally responsible, and so one of the things that we are taking a look at, at how do we maintain this level of excellence, is really through our professional development of teachers. We're not looking to add more to the professional development, but certainly just to maintain what we have, that we feel that needing to have the professional development times at the school to be able to meet as a grade level or district-wide, to meet with those TC, oh my gosh, I just
Staff developers.
Staff developers, to help us continue that work. It was neat to see that, you know, even though this is kind of the year of math, after our first TC staff developer came and spent a day with teachers, they were really excited and walked away with ideas and strategies that they could implement right then and there the next day in their classrooms. And one of the models that we've kind of refined is that teachers really have a say, going back to that choice of what the staff developers are coming, what do you need, what can they do to help you grow in your practice? And so with that in mind, it's been a really positive cycle, and teachers are actually looking forward to the next round of literacy professional development, even in a year where math is something that we're certainly focusing on.
Just a quick question, please, about professional development. Maybe Burke has the, these numbers. I'm just wondering if, is the professional development budget that's been allocated, let's say, to the elementary schools, is it being fully utilized? Is there excess in it that's not being utilized? Is it adequate, is it inadequate? How do we feel about the budget levels that we've established for professional development in terms of usage of it?
Well, I think you're asking about what's the K6 portion of that, and I would really speak to Aaron.
Or maybe it's not possible to answer.
But in terms of utilization, I think it's been more about how to, from Aaron's point of view, how to give everybody at each level what they've asked for from a fixed total sum.
Right, from the total, what I try to do. We have, we, well, what I try to do is allot amounts to every building so that principals can decide what kind of professional development they might need within their building, but there's also district funding, and Betsy Gonzalez also has money as the elementary director of curriculum, and we basically have utilized that, that fund, and we also dip into our Title II funding as well to help support professional development.
Which Title II, I don't, I forgot.
Title II is, it's, it supports professional development opportunities, it's, it's a federally-funded program that we get. And so we have spent, and we really have utilized the funding. So with this statement, and I think Meg said it nicely, is that we're not looking to increase it, we're not looking to decrease it, and the opportunities that the board has given us in regard to early release days have been extremely powerful. And those are exceptional days, because not only can they be used for choice workshops by teachers, but principals can get building time to do the work that they're doing, whether it's around mindset, or culture, their character ed programs. So it's been a very stable account, but we typically use all of it, at least, if not.
And one of the reasons to ask that question is that the, the math, it's revolution in the way we're handling math instruction with Math in Focus. It's, it's huge, and a tremendous burden on, on the teachers, I would think, to make such a big change. And here we've got, I'm not sure I understand this chapter, it says, "Support in preparing for NGSS, New Generation Science Standards." Is that something of the same magnitude as the, as the Math in Focus project? And what is that, I mean, do these really big earthquakes in the way we're delivering math and science, will they demand higher budgets for professional development, or not? I'm just wondering.
And I, that I don't know the answer to exactly until we get into the budget, we'll talk more about that. What we do know, I think the biggest issue around the Next Generation Science Standards is, I think I mentioned it to the board a couple of meetings ago, we thought we had until the spring of 2020 for the High Stakes Test. Because of the state's waiver through ESSA to not do the CMT science this year, they moved it back. So it crunched our timeline to help prepare teachers. We're trying to be as thoughtful about it as possible, but we do envision some significant time in our early release next year to really help teachers. And we're not going to completely change the science curriculum as we did with the math this year. We will take bundles, as Mike talked about, they're units, bundles, that we will do one or two and phase it in over time. And we'll see how we do, but we're less a year than we thought we had.
Thank you.
I think one of the things, too, as Mike had alluded earlier, is that the science, the way you're going to be teaching science is very similar to the shift that we're making in the way we're instructing math. So at least it won't feel so brand-new, and a lot of the questioning techniques that we're using with students in helping them with this math program will be able to be applied in science, in social studies, in reading and writing. So hopefully, it won't feel like such a huge shift, but certainly it's something that we're going to need to pay attention to and make sure that teachers feel supported in doing.
Thank you for that background.
As Mike had alluded to, I think that we've had a lot of support with the math coaches, and it's been very helpful, and we're certainly appreciative of the support that we have. But being able to have a more building-based person, similar to the role that we have with our language arts consultants, we feel would really be able to help us be able to make the gains that we have made in language arts and math as well, and for many of the reasons that Mike had already spoke about. So I think everybody would agree that we'd love to have a specialist at our building. And then again, just being able to continue to enhance the resources that maintain the rigor and support student interests, especially when you, again, take a look at the reading, there's, kids are reading a lot of books now. That's one of the things that we talk about, volume, and being able to read fiction books and nonfiction books, and being able to really increase their levels of reading. In order to do that, you need to have classroom libraries that have books at a variety of levels, a variety of topics, and it also makes sure that they're new topics and new authors and interesting books. I know more and more is coming out in topics for boys that can really hook them in, where we took a look in the past, past some of our fiction books were a little bit more rural-oriented. So we want to make sure that we're making sure that students have the resources that they need in order to continue to perform at high levels. And then the other thing is, I think, really taking a look at our building maintenance and updates. I think that Simsbury has really paid itself on being fiscally responsible, and when tough budget times have come, we spent the money on people rather than our facilities. And I think now we're at a point where our facilities can't be ignored much longer. I think if you come and take a look at some of the bathrooms in any of our school, or things of that nature, they really do need to take, we need to take a look at our buildings and see, how are we going to maintain and have a plan for them? And I think it's going to be tricky, because times are going to be difficult, and there's certainly going to be challenges, but how do we balance making sure that we're providing our students with the best teachers, the best supports, but also being able to provide them an environment in which they can thrive?
And a math coach for Mike.
And a math coach for Mike.
Another one. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions?
We do want to say, we do want you just to take our word for it.
Oh, good, oh, good, this is fun, I love this part.
We certainly have a lot to be proud of, but we, we have, you know, we were able to put together a video with the kids to let you hear from them.
We tasked some of the experts to talk to you about the work they've been doing this year.
Open the next tabs.
The next, up top.
Yep.
Go down.
Here it comes.
Instead of saying it's too hard, I could say I might need a little more help with this. Math can sometimes be tricky, but instead of giving up, you can use some strategies to help you. It helps me remember my strategies before I do them. When my first strategy doesn't work, it encourages me to try a different strategy and try again. I don't get so frustrated that I want to quit, I keep going until I get the right answer. Please try your best, never give up. This helps you learn more. Always help others to be better. I like when everyone shows empathy, and if something's really hard, then keep on trying and trying, not giving up. You should never give up, really, because, because if you fix myself, it'll always bring you down instead of helping you fix the problem. It helps you be more confident at doing hard things. Everyone struggles on something. Maybe one day, you will get through your struggles, but you will never achieve your goals unless you lose mindset. Say things like, "I can do it," or "I didn't get it yet." Make me work hard until I say, "I get it." Learning about processes and processes side, and we're learning a lot about the stories that keeping you organized, so you don't have to put everything in a folder and leave it in your desk. Since this is actually Singapore math, there is a different perspective on the strategies that you're using. You can see with the manipulatives what is actually happening with the math that you do every day. I love learning, watching to review concepts that I didn't know before, like how to understand the volume vision, and these ways to multiply fractions in decimals. Easy, because I can use familiar tools. That can focus. The Aker tasks I challenge, we can even work with partners all together. Also, it's good to have a book that we can study from, especially. Overall, I think the speed of doing math is better, because it's making us work harder. Singapore math is a higher level. When I solve problems, I feel happy, like a pumpkin's apple. I like that there's a lot of partner work, because it's not just your own ideas, and you can learn from a partner. It's fun, because it has harder problems, but not too hard. Other problems have lots of interesting pictures and details. Now you'd like to use a piece of your box and iPad to get, I mean, interest correct, and I like looking at other people's work when they're all finished, to like make my work next time even better. I like working with openers, and I like working all together with everyone in my whole class.
That was great.
Very nice.
And so we just, again, want to say that we couldn't do all this great work, you know, it's true, it certainly takes a village in order to raise a child, and so we couldn't do this without the amazing teachers that we have in each of one of our buildings. Our students are coming to school eager and
More time.
Rest music, back on music, ready to finish up. Yeah, with all of our students coming eager to learn, you know, the families who support our students and really making sure that they get what they need, and they're loved and nourished, and, you know, doing their homework, keeping them well-balanced, certainly your support and all of you do to help encourage our work, and certainly our, our community's support in, in the school. So, you know, we certainly get the honor of being able to showcase all of the work, but we couldn't do it without the army behind us, and so we just want to make sure that we get a shout-out to them as well.
I like the uniform there, too. Positive vibes, rise and sparkle. Those are some positive kids in there. That was, that's great to see walking around your halls every day.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, that was great.
Thank you.
That was wonderful to hear.
Yeah, the quality of that presentation really reflects the, I mean, I'm serious, and it's the second time I've been able to say that. The quality of this presentation reflects the excellence of the school that you folks represent.
But it's very nice, especially when you're doing such a big project, especially the math, to get some feedback at this early, and positive feedback this early in the year. I'm so excited to hear more as the year goes on. Moving on to my friend, Mr. Leclair.
Hey, so we have our six-year capital improvement plan, the initial review, you've got a memo as well as the, the six-year first preliminary draft, and every year, we really start forward, rolling forward with what was on years two through six. The difference this year is that while we had the Simsbury High School tennis court project that was funded for 1718, we had agreed, as was discussed earlier, that we needed to move the Henry James Project out. So now that creates, in that first year, a much more clogged grouping of projects. So we have, we have that. Henry James Phase Two project is obviously the largest in the first year of the plan. We also have a boiler project at Latimer Lane, which was taken apart from the overall Latimer Lane renovation project, which was also pushed out last year in an effort to try to, you know, keep within the 7% debt limit of the overall town. And word of ad, we have the Simsbury High School turf field, the second turf, turf field, which has been on the schedule for several years, and we also have stadium-related renovations. Now, the, the tennis courts, now that we've moved the location to create new, new courts, you can really see the sort of vision of what our athletic director, Jeff Penny, spoke about last year. We tried to look in a sort of master planning sense at Simsbury High School athletic facilities, and now you can see that there's a, a link between the current stadium, the courts, and the grass fields that are used most frequently, that would be ideal to be able to put some sort of facility to improve, you know, have permanent bathrooms, some sort of kitchen, snack, snack area, and, and the hope would be to also have other storage and, and areas to support the teams. So that is something that, that we're, we are working with Mylone and McBroom, the firm that helped with the tennis courts, to try to get some cost estimates, and we'll be bringing some of those to try to, try to flesh that out further. Also, you know, Jeff is, is looking at the potential impacts of a later, later school day on some of the athletic needs. So in the second year, we've added in bold one of the athletic needs. So in the second year, we've added in bold one, one new project, which is replacing more than 105,000 square feet of Simsbury High School roof. Even though there were new, new parts of the renovated school that had new roofs, that was last done just under 20 years ago. And we actually have a roof inspection done of all seven schools each and every year, actually. We got a, we got a formal bound copy. This was from last year. We haven't gotten the new, the new report fully, but we did see that the condition of this high school roof is now looking like it's going from good to fair, and it's something that, this is eligible for school partial reimbursement, but it is a more lengthy process. And we would see that probably in several more summers, we would be needing to undertake this project. So Steve Twitchell, our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, and I, we're going to also bring forward to you a more developed schedule of other, other roof sections, which we'd expect to be probably farther out in this six-year plan that we have to be watching, that are, this would be off warranty in 2018. We had pretty good luck at Central School, where we had done that roof two summers ago, and we had gone well past that warranty and just kind of watched it each and every year. But with this one particular section, large section of the high school, it's starting to, it's starting to fail somewhat. So there's signs of that, and we need to be planning for it. So in the memo, we've bolded out several other topics that we're going to be researching and bringing forward to the board. Obviously, as Matt said right at the outset, we may be looking at some differences for Henry James. And we, you know, we really have gone from a focus over the last four to five months of just what is our operating budget, to finally being able to get back to some focus on, on a next round of capital. And clearly, we have to maintain those things that the taxpayers have already funded, and we're definitely going to be bringing forward recommendations on both the roof, roof buildings, roofs of all buildings. Also, district-wide security is an area where we need more funding. We did utilize the, the very last dollars of some of the town capital money that was earmarked for security improvements. And Neil Sullivan, Steve Twitchell, and with support of our police department, will be looking to try to help prioritize needs throughout all of our schools. Master planning is something that the town of Simsbury got a funding in the 1718 capital budget. They're hoping to hire a firm to help with support of town planning for town buildings, and we would like to do something similar. So we would expect to bring forward a request for some support in funding to look at our seven buildings. And then lastly, as the elementary principals mentioned, you know, there's definitely needs within the buildings that get requested each and every year to do some renovations and items that we just can't fit into our CNR capital non-recurring funding. And I think we're going to have to try to package those in some way to put them on the schedule and try to see if we can get, we can get more funds to be able to do more that's being requested. So that's a quick overview. There's going to be a lot of work still to come, but as, but as Matt said, I think a more workshop-focused would be, would be helpful because there are a lot of competing requests for dollars, and some things are obviously going to have to be farther out, but we need to get a more, a more clear plan. So if there's any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I just have one, just, just so we can get our minds wrapped around some of these things in a preliminary basis. The second bullet point, district security improvements. I don't think I, as a board member, have seen any of that up until now. What's that all about, and what are some of the priorities in that area? And what kind of money are we talking about?
Well, we're going to have to develop a sort of first-level request, but I would say several hundred thousand dollars is kind of the minimum that I think we would need. There's improvements in, while we have a door lock automated system, and we have fobs to, you know, to get into our buildings, we have, we have access control from all of these doors, we have a next generation of software that needs to be revised and replaced. So we have to plan for that. We have started to do that in two of our schools. So we've got a, we've got a list of really just maintaining that, that infrastructure to the next generation. It's been about 10 years. So that's something that, that we have to maintain what, what we have. I think there's some areas where we need to replace and in some cases, expand security cameras, both in and outside of our buildings. There's some interior door locks that we'd like to replace. There's a host of really nuts and bolts.
This is mainly related to door security.
Generally, but yeah, it'll be, you know, there'll be broader review. There may be some things that are grounds-related, and so we'll come back with a list to start being able to attack those.
Thank you. That's the only question I have.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now we are moving on to probably Burke again, talking about our budget calendar.
Right. So this is the familiar calendar. We've got on here the tri-board meeting on the 21st, the first kind of introductory meeting on the 12th of December for the board to hear about some of the major, major drivers. And as is always the case through the, through the charter, really kind of being driven off of needing to submit the budget to the Board of Finance in March, the capital budget by mid-February to, to the town. And then we're looking at the preliminary dates that have been discussed with the Board of Finance for a public hearing, April 5th, and possible referendum in May. There was conversation by the Board of Finance that they, they felt like, you know, they would, they would like to stick to our more normal May schedule. The last, you know, the last year or two, we've had that pressure of, well, what if we wait longer? We'll get better information. And ultimately, I think that's a little bit of a fallacy, that you're going to get a lot, a lot better data by just waiting, as we obviously waited many, many more months this past summer. So we're, we have highlighted here that there were a few of those proposed dates that conflict with Board of Ed meetings, and we're hoping to be able to, you know, to see if some of those dates can be, can be moved so that there's not a direct conflict.
That'd be great. Thank you for looking into that. Any questions? Are you all available for every one of them? All right. We can open up the floor to the public audience again. Anyone? David, do you have anything to say?
I don't know. Just happy to be here.
Happy to have you. Boy Scouts?
Bathroom break.
Still get the badge.
Still get the badge. All that, all that said, our next meeting is on Tuesday, November 28th. We canceled that, so it'll be on December 12th.
I just would like to just say one thing. Congratulations to my fellow colleagues on our recent election, Mike and Tara and Tom, and myself included. And we're here for another four years, Superintendent Curtis and administration and everyone. So that was it. And welcome, Jennifer, as part of this very distinguished group. So.
Thank you, Lysia.
All right. I would accept a motion.
No, for sure.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in December. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you to all of you who came.
I'm waiting for an offer from Pittsburgh. And I'm going to Chicago on 28th to go shout out.